Is there another one set of these?
I have an agenda. I've called the meeting to a later. Nine minutes, seven. First thing on the agenda is Stetson School, an A&R plan. People here from Stetson. Tell me what's proposed, please.
Actually, I'm fairly new to this project. The gentleman who started this is since retired and got handed on to me. So I don't have the full history of it, but I know that we were doing some surveying of the property and I think it was determined that the boundaries, the existing boundaries for 723 South Street, which is kind of... This is a larger scale of 723 South Street. So Stetson actually probably all the way around this. It could be a larger number. Possibly that.
These look like multiple copies.
So basically what happened was we determined that the boundaries were actually this dash line, which is skewed so that the stone wall, which is on the Clark's property, and the blue portion of the driveway, which is on the Clark's property, was actually beyond their boundary under the Stetson property. So we entered into agreement with the Clarks to just realign those boundary lines so that the square footage of the lot was the same. They just came to a perpendicular off of South Street. So they just basically took the boundary lines and shifted them so that they were perpendicular.
So this boundary is over the stone wall.
So this is the new boundary line.
Where is the new one going to be up here?
Well, the new is, before it was kind of a rectangle. Now it's a rectangle with more than ninety of the corners. So this dash line represents the original boundary. And you can see it crossed through the driveway. This outbuilding wasn't on their property. The stone wall wasn't on their property. So, and I don't have the history of how it was discovered, but I think it was one of the innocent father's survey work on the site.
This here was done in 2014, right? It was two years ago. What I'm wondering about is this line here is being moved out.
Correct.
There is a kind of funky tree line through there now. It's got to be way up here.
Right, so I believe this right now is in the tree line. But pointed this way, I believe it takes it out of the tree line or over there. I'm not sure if I would do that. The survey was planned to be planned a couple of weeks ago. So I was on the impression this was already, had already been discussed. And I apologize if that's incorrect. But as I said, we originally believed that, I believe that the Clarks felt that this is where their property line was, what we're seeing as the new boundary. What we found during the survey was this was actually the boundary. And Stetson School and the Clarks both agreed to that. So we have a agreement with the Clarks to realign the boundaries so that they're moved to what they thought they were originally. So that it puts the driveway and their outbuilding and the stone wall all within their property lines. So basically, it's a land swap. We're taking over this piece, they're taking over this piece.
So this line is not going to change?
It changes a little bit, I think, because if you take this and skew it, this line ends up back there. So they start it off with X amount of square feet. They have that same square feet when we're done. It really does nothing for the Stetson property. It just clears up an error on the boundary lines originally. And it gives the Clarks the property line that they originally thought they had.
If I rent and I got a contract with...
Pardon?
I got a contract. We rent this lane.
Okay.
The only thing that's going to bother is just here. You can only cut out.
I do, so it exists in the outbuilding, exists in the stone wall. And I believe that's all tree there, isn't it?
Yeah. Funky thing.
So really, this only shifts this property line back. Just a number. And I apologize if I didn't have more information on that.
I'm looking at who's done the parcel A, B, and C and the square footage. If it's to maintain the same square footage, how does that work with square footage as it's listed on this plan?
How's it?
How does it composite back to the same square footage? In the A, B, and C, or C and A are actually dissimilar numbers. If I'm reading this right, is parcel A this wedge here, parcel C this wedge, and B the piece in the middle, or is that the composite piece before it started? I'm not following what's gone on here. So we've degluniated this.
Yeah, I believe parcel B, the original, was the original parcel.
With the parallelogram, right?
Right. Parcel A is what's now going to be part of Stetson. And parcel C is what's now going to be part of the Clark property.
Okay. So... So, excuse me, one second. So the square footage does change. If A is being relinquished and C taken on, there's more square footage between the two. Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
But six thousand five hundred on A and eight thousand four hundred on C.
They're giving up six thousand five hundred forty-three and they're getting eight thousand four hundred eighty-one. So they're doing a gain.
That's what I'm saying. It's different, it's a gain, a net gain. But not the same square footage.
The Clarks might be getting a gain because their parcel C is not getting theirs. And parcel A is going to be Stetson's. So this property is on the, let's see, it's beyond Stetson Road in relation to the post office at Stetson School.
Raise us some relation to the church.
Relation to the church?
Or Stetson Road?
So Stetson Road is up on this side. Way up, quite a bit up.
Half an hour up.
So this is further south.
When you go down South Street, Clarks house here. You can see the stone wall and then you can see the book right down through there. Down there, coming underneath South Street. Over in here, there's a big...
So this is on the east side of South Street.
This is a larger scale. So here's the property in question. There's the church, there's Stetson Road. So this would be aligned that way. If that makes sense?
Why isn't there a locus sketch on here? To show that.
It's only our area.
It's an undersized lot that you're making a slight increase to. You're not making it more non-confluent. Making it slightly less non-confluent. Somebody must have thought that this was the, the wall was the property line somewhere along the way. Or they didn't have built that shed. And the driveway.
So do you recommend where you put it?
There's usually language beyond here indicating that Stetson has the abutter who's giving up some of the property, has land after that would comply with, I think it's pretty obvious he does. But usually that statement is put on there by the engineer.
I'm not sure why that's on there.
What's your relationship to this project?
I'm the construction manager for Stetson School. But as I said, I've kind of inherited this from somebody who's recently retired.
Is there any timeframe which is critical, like this plan being signed?
Well, I know that the Clarks are anxious to get this all dissolved.
Which was probably a big surprise to them too. Dynamic picture. Who's the engineer?
Are you chairing the meeting, Neil? We have a question from our... Your planner?
Plan, I'm Eric Smith, I haven't had a chance to meet Neil yet. I'm planning on seeing Marc PC. I actually looked at it yesterday. It's actually, it's one of those conveyance plans and standards that's under the area extension. But it was the file day, it was filed on March 17th with town clerk. And the paper that I saw yesterday, it means there's 21 days. So if the board had to take up with this again, your next meeting, I guess, is not going to be until March...
Actually, they can meet. Because we left them on Monday.
Oh, okay. So they can meet on Tuesday. So yeah, they could still meet because it would still be...
Yeah, they can meet on Tuesday.
Is it possible to get the engineer to add that language? I'll leave it to him now, maybe.
So what is that, do you want to see?
Maybe they have a locus. Like a little square, maybe some place that shows like the locus. Sort of like that other one that you were referring to to show where this is in the bigger picture. Usually they have a statement to the effect that this gets tested. Needs to conform to the area requirements. I mean, it's obvious it does, but usually that statement is something that the engineer would have put on there. And I'm surprised Thompson listed it because they usually do good work.
No action at this time? No action this time? Thank you.
And so someone will find out? All right, do you need those plans in advance?
Remembering that night is fine. They won't be in ahead of time.
Do you still require six hours in my line?
Five will, five will be, if you want to get away with the one, we can't get away with five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're a little bit late. There's no other building packages?
No, no.
For the Mayland property, solar project, we're just a tad off for the time. Anything else that needs to be added or any other comments?
I do have some stuff. This came in today. Yes, I just got it at...
Do you have a copy?
I think they made some more, a few more.
I don't know if there's a registered copy.
Yeah, I thought I made a few extra, so there's one right there.
If I could just comment that the public portion of this has long since closed, so I don't know why, first of all, you'd be looking at this or second of all, you'd be accepting it because you've looked at everything now and your charge is to make decisions. So maybe it could be bears to weigh in on that. But there shouldn't be any other outside information coming in from the public. It should be the board making a decision. And then if they vote favorably, putting conditions on the special permit, this doesn't belong as part of the record, you shouldn't bring it in.
Is this from the lawyer? How was that determined?
Jim?
Attorney Cranston's got a point. Your public input portion of the process has terminated.
So even though this is a requested piece by the board, it's no longer a missile because we closed?
We made it was requested.
Well, we asked for input from another attorney. This is who this is? So, does the board have the right to allow information after the hearings were closed? I suppose one of the, you know, Mr. Cranston wanted to make a comment or someone from the Moore's wanted to make a statement. Can't we just decide we want to hear something?
I prefer that any members of the board, they would tend to both stop looking at that document until you have an answer from counsel and no public input is done. So if you want the petitioner to amend his plan to include a plant, you could do that because he's not the public, he's the petitioner.
I think at this point, once you close the public input portion, the dialogue you're having now is with the applicant and the board. As to, for instance, if you're going to discuss conditions like you were at the last meeting, I think that would be an appropriate time to discuss that kind of thing with the applicant. As to input in this nature, I don't think that's appropriate.
Great. So I'm open to hear what the board considers. Comments or additional thoughts?
We did close...
Yeah, but this is for us.
Closed the hearing, so...
Yeah, but this is for us, so lean in on what are your thoughts and sentiments, Tom? I'd like to poll across the whole board and open up any discussion. So it's all aware, I've read through all the notes of the meetings that were, whatever.
You weren't here, pardon me, you weren't here at the last meeting. And I tried to go through kind of an extensive little, who is eligible to vote?
Right.
And I don't know if that's all been determined, but a few minutes, but I understand that you've attended all the meetings.
I've attended all those and the ones that were missing. And I understood that made me eligible to vote.
Actually, any of that news was not related to this.
Any of the discussions that were had, I haven't enough.
Because I think you had all the public input.
All except the one on the 7th of December, which I've read up on that one as well.
So we have five. And those minutes were approved, right?
The 7th's are approved, the 21st are not approved.
So we have five members that can participate in votes.
That's as I believe it is, unless you tell me differently.
Well, I understand you have five, based on that.
Well, I'm trying to be careful. You know, I've read through everything and so I'm not confused. So John, if you want to start?
I have that right here. Want to do it now? I also have... I'm sorry, I have one more thing to submit for this. This is from Attorney Cranston. Pass that down.
Are we going to need this?
Why cannot be accepted?
Right, right. What is that? The thing was closed, it's closed, so let them vote.
I don't know what he's got there.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, throw up one voice. I've heard what you have to say. Can counsel respond?
That was submitted in response to a request from the board regarding proposed conditions.
But ours was in response to...
The last meeting?
Yeah. So ours was in response to...
So why is it that we can't read ours, but they can read yours? I didn't know the board had requested anything from someone who wasn't at the meeting last time.
I was not aware of that either. This is in direct response to the last meeting.
And my note was also...
We, we were at the last meeting because we had something that had been planned prior and we couldn't get out of it.
But there was no request at that meeting for any input from you that I'm aware of.
So it's open or not open?
Well, I think the document that Attorney Cranston has presented is in direct response to the discussion that the planning board was having at the last meeting.
Wait a minute, let me check that one.
Because you were discussing, you were here, they were discussing potential conditions and it looks like these are all in response to some of those conditions.
This is, I have this electronically.
Did you get this?
It's okay?
I've seen it electronically.
I guess I have to agree with both counsels that the hearing was closed and this should have been submitted prior to...
So this is a discussion between...
Right, it should have been submitted prior to the closing of the hearing.
So we would establish that. I'd like to move forward, do a dialogue amongst us, where we are. Five members that are voting and Doug wants to lean in. Quite willing to lean in as well. Won't be boring, but yeah. And you've heard all of the arguments. You are missing, there are some, and if you read all of the... So... Comments, Phil?
I'm, anyone can start. I mean, I'll start if somebody else doesn't.
Go ahead.
Well, you know, I've deliberated. Firstly, I want to acknowledge that, two things. I am not an abutter, but I'm near proximity to this. And there was another parcel that was going to, was proposed to be developed on my side of the street, actually in back, and the array was going to be in back of the, in back of my house. And so I had an opportunity to reflect on that from my own disposition towards it. And I felt that the greater benefit to have the solar was there. But I also was not looking at the frontal view of the panels. I was going to be looking at the panels of scans, if you will. So that's where I was on that and I was, you know, I would have welcomed that to be in my near backyard. And I've deliberated this about the contention with the road. And at this point, that's a jump ball to me. I still don't have a clear delineation of where that is or whether or not it is pertinent to this, or germane. What I do think is germane to me and the whole situation is the array and its placement. Because it does impact, in my judgment, the Moore's, very, very much, very much so. That it's not a distance away or partly obscured. It's really going to be in their face. And so that's a major impediment because I believe my charge, you know, to be here on this board is to protect the welfare of the town and the townspeople. And I know that, you know, there's all kinds of legal wrangling of what that actually means. And I've read up, we've had discussions about that on the board itself before this and we probably would continue to. Well, if there is a, it seems like a slippery slope to me when I read it up on Black's Law. That's why I did the research. And it comes down to, you know, how the sense is amongst all the participants and who's best served. Because one, another thing I've learned from the six years being on this board is that whatever choices we make, or I make, let me make an I statement, whatever choice I make will be wrong to someone. And so, you know, I'll get ink on my face somewhere. But that's where I'm looking right now, is that it's not a contention over the road or frontage or any of that, because I don't, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know, and even if I were a lawyer, I guess you can play the argument on both sides of the instrument. What does matter to me is the way it's cited and how much it's affronting the abutter. And subsequently, I have a piece that I think is germane to this too, is that there is another property, UML property, that this could be cited on? Oh, well, that's where I was thinking that, that was bearing it, but that...
There is no more property we have that that could be cited.
I thought there was some on West Street, but anyway, so that's... The biggest piece, the biggest piece to me is how much that's going to be viewable or witnessable by these folks. And then actually, all of the panels are directly facing their property, which they're going to get whatever glare, you know, and it's, I read up on that too. It depends upon who the manufacturer is of the particular array, how much glare you get from all of these. But whatever glare is going to be there, is going to be reflected straight at the house because they are due south of the array. That's what, that's my feelings and sentiments at this juncture.
Others?
I've got a problem with the setback. Going to be on 100 feet on the possible property line. I believe everybody else said we did, we had to be 200 feet from that property line. And then in some places you read it says 100 feet from Moore's house. It does make you give it towards houses, towards boundary line. And you figure 200 feet from that boundary line toward the, for our actual... And the other thing is, when the two lawyers are trying to find out what Bishop wrote it and not getting it written, stating the same, what it is, where it is, or if it is, I just believe there's a chart paper that says, yes, it is a town road, nobody's...
Thank you. Thank you.
If I, if I could address...
Certainly.
The, the ever-popular discussion of the status of Windship Road. It is not a town road. It's not a town-accepted road. That portion of Windship terminates someplace between Route 122 and the easterly boundary, probably, of the Moran property. Somewhere's in there, most likely, we'd find if we had the ability to resurrect some people from the 1800s, that that was where it terminated. But that does not mean that the thing that was Windship Road is not a way, because that is what it's resulted, as a result of the 1830 termination discontinuance. That is now a way. It's not a town way, it's a way. And has, it has some rights and some, some obligations to the abutters to what was Windship Road, have access to use of that former town road. It's not a public way, though. If that helps clarify something.
What does the special town council say, or does he have any thoughts on that, or, I mean, we haven't gotten anything in writing either.
And you're not going to.
Why not?
You're not going to.
If you're not calling it a public way, then we deserve an explanation from the town council.
I just gave it to you.
I mean, the special town council.
No, you don't.
The one the town hired to oversee this.
I'm not, I'm not going to go rehash this all down.
Well, you may not go, but you will.
Yeah. We want to hear what you have to say.
You want to respond to it.
Well, we're going to respond to somebody.
Jonathan?
I don't think we're able to figure out the road. Very, very sorry, whether it's a way, public way.
As I indicated at the last meeting, that does not stop the board from acting upon this application.
Well, personally, I don't find that, you know, either way, it doesn't, you know, I'm not taking that, that's not my piece.
And that's what I tried to, I know you weren't there, but I tried to express that to all the people present at the last meeting. That, that conclusion of it not being a town way does not stop it from being able to be used as a way for a solar facility to be on and abut, whatever that way is. As to their access, that's their problem.
Thank you.
That's, that's my bone of contention. What did we pay, the, the town pay this lawyer for? To tell us, I'm not going to put anything on tape.
He was told not to. I mean, I, I, I think, I guess we're going to rehash this whole thing again. I told the attorney not to put it in writing. Do you want to keep, you know, how do we repeat that?
Right. Thanks. I just don't get it.
I guess, I guess I can't make it any clearer.
I think that's something the lawyers have to sign out about.
Well, we're, we're tasked with a decision, and so we're not going to have a choice, we're not going to have a choice of having an answer. So we need to make a choice, we need to have discussion, or whatever else the board is ready to do.
Phil? I think the airphone got us there. I think it'll last on us.
Well, I don't know if he has, if he's willing to throw more out. You have more to say?
Most of what I, I, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a plumber by trade, but I'm not a, somebody who doesn't understand things. But common sense to me tells me, you know, something's wrong. Why can't we get a definitive answer about this? Like you had said, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. If we say yes, the, the Morans are affected, affected, infected, affected. If we say no, the Nylands are affected by it. I've gone back and forth and back and forth in my head over this, and I just don't see any good way out of it. I wished and I was hoping that there would have been a definitive answer on that road.
I can, I can say it again, and I can be as definitive as you want, but it is not a town way, not a town-accepted road, because it's been abandoned as a portion of it. However, it is a way upon which abutting properties have the ability to go in and out from either Washburn or 122. And that, that is as definitive as it'll be, and it's a summary of what, what took place between Attorney Bracken and myself. If he would have put it in writing, that's what he would have said.
Anything else?
I don't know, I don't know what else you want about that road. It's not a town way.
But both people can use it.
All the people that abut it can use it.
And abut, and Mr. Nyland use it?
He's in a butter.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from Doug, if he has any comments on this.
I do. I have been concerned about the discussion about the road, and it seems that although we've been given an answer that says we can go ahead, we haven't really been given an answer that says, here's the definitive status of that road and what can be done. But as someone said, it's, it's, I don't think we're going to understand the road in this, in this forum. But one thing that, that I would like to bring up, in other solar facilities that have been approved, there's been a lot of work with local abutters to try and mitigate the effects of this facility. And the one I think is probably the biggest success story is the Lipsin property. From what was originally proposed for the Lipsin property to what was finally approved was pretty vastly different. There were concerns that West Street is a, is a scenic byway, and we pulled panels way back from the road to minimize the impact of, of that scenic byway. There was also an abutter up on the hill there, and we pulled panels way back from there to lessen the impact on that. And when I look at that, I think, well, you know, how much have we done to lessen the impact on the people that will be affected by this?
Good point. Phil, that's what I had to say.
Yes, question?
Yeah, I'd just like to address that if I, if I could.
I'd be willing to accept that.
Okay. We've, we have revised our site plan, we've agreed to move our arrays further away from the Moran's property line, we've increased our landscape offered so that it would be a solid screen behind their house. We've reached out several times to try to meet with them, we've made it clear that we would be happy to sit down and talk about other ideas, other ways you can mitigate any impacts. They haven't wanted to meet. That's, that's fine, we didn't want to force the issue. With respect to glare, I just want to point out that we did file a report previously that the state had prepared, which answers and addresses a lot of the questions regarding solar and its impacts, and it clearly states in there that glare is not an issue, that there is no reflection from these solar panels. And in fact, if you look at, there are panels at Logan Airport, at the airport, there were low, there were panels along the Mass Ternite, and so glare is, is no issue whatsoever. Thank you.
John? You have nothing to say? Phil?
Okay. I'm not sure why we wouldn't have gotten a written opinion from the other, other council other than, other than perhaps the...
I know you understand what I'm saying, Phil. I told the other attorney to not give me a written opinion. Now, I, I can't say that many more times, but I said...
Okay, can I ask why?
No.
All right, maybe you're afraid of the town being sued, I don't know. Anyway, let me get back to the, the road itself, and I go, I think we can go beyond that, but for a way in our plan, which was signed, I guess, in 1986, the, each building lot was front on a public way, or a way which the municipal clerk certified is maintained and uses a public way, to a way shown in a plan approved as a subdivision, or three, a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective, in, in the town where the land lies, having, in the planning board's opinion, adequate access, that is sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction provided for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land and for installation of municipal services to serve such land as buildings erected or to be erected. We were here when this was signed in 1986, but to me, the planning board may have decided that there was inadequate access to the, to the lot. I, I drafted an opinion, and to me, there are certain criteria that we needed to meet in order to approve the application, and... Under Bay Code, Chapter 140, Zoning 147, Resident District B, specific uses including electric fire facilities may be allowed by the planning board after public hearing and subject to appropriate regulations if determined to be neither detrimental nor offensive to the neighborhood. Mass General Law 48, Section 9, states that special permits may, may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance or bylaw, and such permits may also impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use. And this is the, the big one here. Mass General Law 48, Section 3, provides that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or indirectly regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. I don't see that this project would impede the public health, safety, or welfare, and to me, it needs to be approved on that basis. The Berry Co. talks about whether the facility is detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood. Now, we've gotten, we've gotten different opinions. I know there are some neighbors who report, some neighbors are against it. I think if we're going to, you know, issue a, a permit, that we need to make a finding that it's neither detrimental nor offensive to the neighborhood, and also that the project will not place a burden or risk to public health, safety, or welfare, will provide benefits to the town area, and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulation. So I drafted something with that in mind, and I have certain conditions that I'd like to see and try to modify from what I submitted originally.
I read through those, I think everybody else on the board has a copy of those, but I think it's until we have one of the board's choices to, to go back to those.
Okay, I mean, I mean, the board may decide not to approve the permit.
I don't know that.
Then the conditions would be moved, so...
So to, to go reading through all of those until the choices are, the choices made.
I got a comment.
Yes.
Phil, you mentioned, you, there's abutters there in favor of it.
Yes.
What abutters are those?
Okay, if you look in...
I know Mark O'Connor is one.
Mark O'Connor and...
But he doesn't live next door. He owns a commercial property.
Well, he, he isn't a butter in the north and in the property.
Right.
He doesn't, he doesn't live right there.
Well, that's what I would like to clarify.
He owns the property. And then Mr., Mr. Higgins, he's a neighbor, he's not in the butter.
Right, he lives across 122, and neither one of them can see this.
You good?
Yeah.
I'm going to allow.
Okay. I just wanted to say that there is four abutters that can see this and that will be negatively impacted with this project, and they are not in favor of this.
Thank you.
Okay, the point of recall on this particular issue, you know, whether the neighborhood finds it offensive or detrimental. I'm not quite sure how to handle this. I mean, and the state says that we have to do it from what I, from what I read, and then we have the Berry Co. talking about what is detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood, so how do we reconcile that? I had the same issue with the project we had in South Berry, off of South Berry Road. And I believe counsel advised us that we needed to find a finding, you know, that it was not detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood. So I, I don't know, if it's just a semantic thing or what.
Please.
How counsel has, but could you make the finding, it would be detrimental, subject to the conditions that you wanted to put in the decision?
Exactly.
That wouldn't make the, not detrimental.
Exactly. The key, the key to this is the board has the ability, in determining whether you're going to approve it or not, to construct conditions or craft conditions that would make it acceptable to four members of the board. Those conditions can be very similar to what the board had adopted as regulations. Those regulations, as I stated before, need to go back to a town meeting vote, requiring a two-thirds vote to become part of the zoning bylaw for the town. But that doesn't stop the planning board in reviewing this special permit to craft conditions as a part of then a favorable vote.
Other comments? Are you complete, Phil? Yeah, I was just going through here and talking about conditions, so... Yeah, so, let me...
So I think you really do need to discuss those conditions.
Well, yes and no. What I was thinking maybe would be appropriate at this point is to do a straw poll to see where we are, and then see what it takes to, to make whatever the straw poll tells us how to amend it, so...
I just want to make a comment about the statute, the statutes that Phil was referring to. The statute relative to your, your bylaw says detrimental or offensive to the neighborhood. That was in place quite some time ago. Mass statute says you cannot have a bylaw unless it complies with the terms of the statute. That's, your, your bylaw is clearly more restrictive than the statute allows. The statute simply talks about public safety, health, and welfare. It doesn't say anything about the neighborhood, and frankly, I think you need to take a serious look at that South Berry project, because there are a lot more people who can see that and complain about that if you go back through your records than we have here tonight. So I don't know how you set precedent there and, and don't allow this project when you allow rapid down there, which was clearly more offensive to the neighborhood.
Okay.
I just don't understand why you can keep talking and we can't have our lawyers think that.
I understand, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going, I hear, I heard the council's report of comments, and I'm going to allow.
Okay.
All right, out of all fairness? So whatever you need to say.
I, that was just, I'm, nothing.
I'll, I'll say, there's one thing detrimental to us, is I just received a license appraisal report that said my value would go down $69,000, my house value. It's from a license appraisal that I opened the phone book, found, asked them to do a report, paid for a report, and that's what the findings have, so I can show the board that if they voted after. That is detrimental to my family, and I don't know what the values of my other abutters and, and the values of their houses that would go down.
And it's detrimental because it's my everyday thought. It's my every thought before I go to bed, every time I wake up to go to the bathroom or I hear a noise, it's the only thing I can think of. This is consuming me, that's detrimental. Every day, every time before a meeting, I had to stop coming. I get headaches, I have to stay in bed the whole day, he takes the day off. It's detrimental.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
One, one second. Thank you. Yes, Phil?
Well, Mr. Cranston said, you're saying that our current language is too restrictive because it doesn't comply with the state statute?
Correct. Are you referring to the language in our zoning bylaw?
Yes.
So that's on the ground areas.
I think that that may be for some future event.
What appears to me is that there's a word that I used when I initially spoke, and that is about welfare. And that kind of encompasses absolutely everything else that's in the regs, and I think the intention of what the state is, and I believe that's what my charge is. My charge is to look at the welfare and the pluses and minuses and make a determination based on that. And that's my charge. And you have anything else, Phil?
I'm just saying that we have a state statute, but to me, that's paramount over any bylaw at the town.
I understand that, but it also says about welfare. That charge is.
Well, public welfare, but I mean, we're talking about several people in a neighborhood. Are we looking at the greater public welfare or the best?
We're looking at both. I hope we're looking at both. That's what we have, that's what our charge is.
Is there a threat to public health and safety? I mean, how do we define public, I guess?
I hear. So is there any other discussion that wants to take place when we do a straw poll, where we are?
A straw poll for what?
If we're going to approve or deny where we are.
Well, why not just take the regular?
Because if we want to amend any of the pieces that we want to tag onto this, conditions, then we can do that, or we can try to talk it through with the board to see how they can commit to compliance versus dropping the whole thing and then trying to wangle our way back out of it. So I'd like to do a straw poll. Anybody?
Before you do that, can I lay the, I think are the ground rules?
Okay.
You've got a five-member board.
That's correct.
You have a vote.
Straw.
That can be five people saying no, four people saying no, three people saying no, two people saying no, or one people saying no.
Right.
If it's down to one person saying no, that's, that's an interesting area. You also have the possibility, because as those no's become yeses, you're going to have either one, two, three, four, or five people saying yes. But they may only say yes if they're including conditions that make them say yes.
That's exactly where I'm intending to go with that. That's exactly my point.
This could be a long drawn-out process.
I don't know where else to skin it.
Okay, I understand.
All right, that's the best, that's the best I could come up with.
Just wanted to say so we can know where we're going.
Okay. So at this juncture, gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I feel for the Morins. I've been up there several times, including today.
No.
Yeah, just right in your backyard there, but to me, the statute from the state is paramount, and I don't see it as impacting public health, safety, and welfare.
So you're affirmative?
Yes.
John?
I'm affirmative.
Correct.
No.
Correct, no. Got it.
No.
I'm no. So we're three, two, two. So what I would put out there, what needs to happen to make a no a yes? What needs to be there to turn a no to a yes?
Agreement.
What would have to be there? What, what, what could make the no a yes?
No.
Nothing. Okay. Well, I'll throw out my piece. My piece would be that the setback minimally would be from the property line 200 feet before the array starts. Because that lessens the impact, because I believe that the impact is right there. In, like I said when I spoke before, I chose the word exactly, it's in their face. And it's a balancing act between builds welfare and lines welfare. That's what I'm looking at. Both town people, and I want to do the right thing for both of them. And that's probably not, that's not possible, but that's what I'm trying to do. Which then would give us three, two, which would, that's, Mr. O'Brien? Yep. So nothing can, if you're adamant or adamant, whichever way it's said in this country, against it.
The only way I'd change on that if the Morins and the Neelins could compromise, and they have an agreement.
Is there any, is there any, anything that makes it amenable to you?
Which I propose to walk back is coming from the top down, coming from the Neelin's property, going down their property, and then taking right into the corner.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what, maybe.
Do you have a copy of Lance or?
These are, this is South Street.
That's that other project. This just shows up, it's referring to.
So the board can understand what was going on?
Is that the plan for?
No, that's South Street.
That's the other one we had before.
Does it have a plan for this one?
This one right there, this area right there.
There's a board one.
That's what I was hoping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm waiting. I thought you were unfolding this.
I didn't want. I think what Mr. Moran is saying is instead of coming in from Winship, coming in from the Neelin's property, this will be.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, initially, I was thinking that, but I still, I still feel the impact of the Butters too, with the arrays, besides my family, including my family. So I, I still, it's just, there's too much that I really don't think I could approve anything.
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Not welfare.
I've been allowing all over the place here, so go for it. Please make a brief.
It's a statement.
Yes.
Specific on welfare. So just want to go back to who we are as a company, as a community, solar subscribers, which is pretty different, I think, than all the other projects we look at here in the way. So regarding the welfare, as a partner on a project, what we're going to do is open the project up to the greater community to receive a reduction on their energy bills and to support renewable energy if that was of interest to them. And so we have interest from the whole region to become a subscriber, to be available to all the Butters, directly to their property, directly to their community, businesses. So there's economic benefit to it.
Have you addressed the Morins with that, with that?
We have talked to them, and we've tried to reach out to them.
Okay, thank you. So if I don't hear any other comments, I'm going to call for a vote.
You don't need, you don't need.
One more time, Bob, go ahead.
I just want to, as far as statutes go, I believe in Massachusetts, the town can add to, but can't take away from the statutes that the state puts out, you know, like building codes or regulations and all that. A town has the ability to add to them, but can't take away from them. So that's something that we have as a town. You know, if we have something that says, you know, whatever you were talking about with your regulations that don't comply or too stringent with the state, we have that ability as a town to do that.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to call the vote.
Can I?
Yes, counsel.
In the end, you're going to need a record of how each member voted. I would suggest if someone's voting in favor, they should indicate whether they're voting in favor with no conditions or some conditions.
Okay.
If they're voting against, they should indicate why they're voting against. The people that are voting against, I think, I'll call it a heavier burden, because they need to indicate why they're disapproving.
Okay. Everybody with green, got that?
I've never heard that.
Well, I'm going to get it for the record, because.
Why now? It's right out of the statute for a special permit.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask the Morins a question. So you don't want the project at all, whether the setback is 200, 300, if you can keep your trees or whatever, you just don't want it there?
We didn't, we don't want it at all. We would have maybe if they had worked with a different route coming in, but we don't want it at all.
And we've been approached by CUC even right at the beginning, and they were very negative in their.
They threatened me. They said they would do what they wanted to do, whether it was okay, whether I liked it or not. That's what I was told by that Joe, whatever his last name is.
He hasn't been around in any of these.
I mean, if he's saying that at the beginning of the meeting, at the beginning of all this, what is he going to do when it's okayed? He's going to do whatever he wants. He told me. I mean, if you want to look up footage from the police thing, I'm sure they have a camera of him as I'm sitting outside kneeling down to me, squatting down, and he said that right to my face. And then I started crying, and I came in because I couldn't believe that he was saying that to me, you know? Doesn't matter what you say, we're going to do what we want. How is that right? How can you guys okay that?
Who is this?
That's that Joe who raised that card. He's the guy who came in at the beginning, the skinny, very hyper.
He is the community solar manager, co-owner. Chan here.
And he's never been since, because I know he knows, he stepped over the line. And how can you guys allow that in our town?
We could try to put some safeguards. Regarding the tree clearing, we could have the tree flagged, that would be staying. I mean, we do have a town building inspector, it would be monitoring.
That he's in favor of this, and he's got to go along with whatever they're asking.
He's not qualified to be building.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else before the vote?
Well, I didn't like hearing that.
I thought the camera wasn't on. Why does it keep moving?
Oh, it is on. This is all being recorded.
Wasn't supposed to be.
Wasn't supposed to be? I didn't know anything about not supposed to be.
That's what we were just informed upstairs, that it was not to be recorded.
Talk in and say it was going to be recorded.
I, I did not know it was being recorded, because I, I did not know how to turn it on. I know Mary Ann did not know how to turn it off.
I saw the mics were live when we got here, so I assume it's on.
I think it stays live all the time.
I'm open for transparency. I think it's a really.
It's a public meeting, you know, it's.
Well, no, we just think we should have just.
That's the point, we wanted to.
Yeah, I probably should have announced that it was on, but I'm not even positive, but I believe they are, the green lights. So, call the vote.
On the project with conditions.
Which, which, the conditions?
Could you speak, could you speak up for me?
Sure. John, can you just speak up for me?
Sure, I'm for the solar project with the conditions. Not necessarily all that seems to be drafted, but with some adjustments.
So no department ones for you, John?
He's for with some conditions, but not all of us drafted.
The property line.
What about the property line?
I don't think it needs to be 200 feet. It's approximately what, 30? How far from their house, if I can ask? You know, it's well over.
Hundred. From the house, it's about 150.
Okay. So that would be, I know 100-foot property line, 50 feet from the house to the property line is 150 feet, and to add another 100 feet to that is, I think, asking them off the lot. You know, maybe making the, not the full till 100, keep it at 100, maybe another 125, which would bring it approximately 200 feet from their house to the project. And I'm not really sure about the equipment pad. I don't know what the difference of 14 feet would make between concrete and grass. I don't know what difference that would actually make and for what purpose that would be. The rest of them, I'm okay with.
Okay, thank you.
Phil? I would provide a special permit, but with conditions. It looks like they're proposing moving the panels back so they're at least 100 feet from the property line, which is further back than what was proposed before in our conditions, you weren't here. So I think that's positive. I would like to preserve as much of the existing vegetative buffer as possible. Now, I don't know whether the current pine trees or evergreen trees could be kept or not. I mean, they pose a potential shading problem for the, for the panels, but I would want to preserve as much of the existing vegetative buffer as possible. And talk about whether those trees could be preserved or what could be preserved. And those that are preserved would need to be flagged so the planning board could go out there and just make sure that we know which trees are going to be preserved. I would extend the visual buffer around the southwestern corner for maybe 40 feet and add additional plantings there, and also put some privacy spots in there as well.
Hey, Bill, can we, we have one conversation going. Thank you.
Once the trees and shrubs that are proposed are in, I would want the planning board to have the right to go out there and take a look and request additional plantings if necessary. I think the proponent has already said they were willing to sort of take a look at what pockets might be existing and try to address those. And that would include perhaps some of the Butters who are immediate to the project, you know, have them be able to take a look as well with the planning board at that point. We talked about replacing dead and unhealthy vegetation. That's good. Moving the platform back, the equipment platform back from the property line. They talked about having privacy slats. I would extend those around the southwestern corner as well, along with the 40-foot extension of the, of the plantings. Also, I'm concerned about the number of telephone poles, or I guess power poles, on the right-hand side, on the eastern side. There are five utility poles that are proposed. To me, that's kind of excessive. I don't know whether they can space those out better or not, or put them on the ground, ideally, but try to reduce the number of poles that's on the eastern side of the property. That's, that's pretty much it.
Good. Thank you.
I want to know, I wanted 200 feet check back from the property line and road. We're never going to know what, what kind of statute that road is on, or that weird traffic came in, also cutting our spruce tree that along the boundary line. I don't want to see them being cut down in order to affect that panel. I don't think they should be able to cut them, create down the corner boundary line.
Okay, trees on the boundary. And just for clarity, that is a no vote.
Kind of near the same thing as Kurt, no.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make it quick.
No, I'm going to stop on that.
I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, no, thank you. Dennis?
My vote is no at this point. We had the 200-foot setback before. Now it's a 100-foot setback, I don't think it's a no. The removal of those trees, the effect on the neighbors that live there, not the Butters that don't live there. If there was some kind of conditions that Morins and Neelins could come to terms with, that they're happy with each other over, I'd revisit it. that they're happy with each other over, I'd revisit it. But as it stands now, my vote's no.
Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna stay with what I said initially, that I have to balance the welfare, and I believe that the welfare, your welfare, has been imbedded, and my vote is no. And setting the setbacks would go greatly towards that end of taking away that, that bite, and making more right with the, with the deal. And all of the, some of the other things that Phil had brought up, I think, the cutting of the trees, and most importantly, my belief is if, if you, for any reason, could come to some agreement, then I, I would look at my answer again, if you can come to some agreement with the Neons. All right? And that's, that's, that's basis of what my choice is, no.
We're certainly willing to meet with them if you give us the time to do it.
Okay. I'm not arbitrating that. That's, I think, between you folks to make that, those motions, whatever. So, at this point, it's a formal vote. The formal vote was denied. Denial of special.
In case anyone's thinking there's time to come back before the board with some modification or something like that. Neil's situation is, he's not running for reelection, and the election is on Monday. So his position would become vacant. A new member would be replacing him upon being duly sworn, elected and sworn, and that person would have no ability to act on this petition.
Would he also?
Because he's, the alternate would be the only way.
So, I'm not sure if this is part of protocol or not, but I'm gonna ask, if Doug would indulge, what your vote would be, so they...
I think that would be a good idea.
Some, some inkling of where you are. Would you be willing to do that?
Yes. My vote would be no at this time.
And basis?
Two, two bases. Setbacks, which we've gone to great lengths in other projects for extensive setbacks, we have not done so on this one. And my continuing concerns about the status of Winship Road. That's the two reasons.
Thank you for taking that.
And let me clarify one thing, too. If someone says, here's a legal determination, Winship Road is a road, or a way, or right-of-way, or whatever it is, and it can be used, then I'm fine with that.
Would you want to see something written?
I'd settle for an email.
Email.
Yes. I would prefer to see something written.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we're a little late on the town farm, where the cell tower.
If you guys have had an... It's up to you. I just, I put them on, they were on the agenda.
Is anyone here from the, from the town farm cell tower?
Yeah, they wanna know how would you like to proceed?
Well, if they're gonna expire, what, in, how many more days?
It's not...
Yeah.
When's that cell tower?
June 20th or something.
So, we have, we do have time for them to address it. It's not gonna expire, you know, like before the next meeting.
So, I don't know. So, I really, I really don't know, Jim.
What?
I don't know.
Don't know what?
Yes, if they were cameras.
I think there are, but I'm not sure.
It looks like there's three.
Yeah. These, these lights are green.
Something's, something's...
With a camera to it.
A little late now. All right. So, what's the board's question? You wanna deal with town farm now, or what, you know, do I have some discussion on that, or are you burnt out?
I just have a question about, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can, is there some decision that, to be issued by the planning board regarding this?
Oh, yeah.
And...
That's why you needed to document...
The reason.
...which way each member is voting.
I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable writing something up. I wonder if Eric could do that for us.
How long are you gonna be here, Eric?
Well, I'll be here on Monday. You currently only have until the 5th, the decision town clerk, which would be after Monday, but that's really what time I have.
Eric's leaving Greener Field, shall we say?
Yeah, I imagine all the boards heard this yet. I haven't accepted it, it's actually in the newspaper last week, so I wanted to disclose it on Monday, but I've accepted addition from the Athol Director of Planning Development, effective April 11th, and my last day of CMR PC will be Friday, April 8th. We're working on a transition and plan to make sure you have coverage, and hope to announce something to you guys via email before Monday, or certainly on Monday, we'll have a replacement for you guys.
Do you, do you feel like you have good enough notes about what each person's reasoning with?
Um, you know, I can, I can work something out with that. I just have a comment that we have denied special permits in the past, and we had not done that, so that's why I'm questioning it.
Well, if they'd all said flat no, no matter what, I guess that would've been it. Flat no's.
I mean, we, you know, we can do that, but I, I, we have done some in the past where we've had written up a denial, and, and the vote was, each member was noted what they voted, but not their reason.
Just more detrimental, you know, in public welfare, probably like that would be the language that you would use in a denial case.
Right.
And I don't mind my name being attached with whatever I just said.
I know.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Whatever it was I said.
Well, it's, it's not that I'm worried about your name being attached, it's, I'm just wondering why for this one.
Well, I'm only looking at, check the PDA Section 9, the special permit granting authority shall cause to be made a detailed record of its proceedings, indicating the vote of each member upon each question, or if absent or failing to vote, indicating such fact, and setting forth clearly the reason for its decision.
Well, we could do that, right? Okay. So what about town farm road cell tower? Anyone act on that tonight, or do you wanna go home?
Did they submit?
We haven't had minutes in the meeting for the last minutes, any corrections?
Did they submit an application for another?
No. They just said, we're waiting for us to proceed, so I didn't know...
But they're about to expire.
If they're going to expire.
The email that, just because the word of advice would really not matter, email I got, they were kinda trying to see clarification about how to proceed, because they didn't, I know, and I didn't get a chance to really interact with them much back, because maybe we could follow it by Monday, because you're gonna have a meeting next week, so I can return for that one.
Yeah.
Is that, they like, oh, we didn't see anything regarding, you know, criteria to raise your permits in your bylaw. And so I think, well, so, basically, it's almost like you need to apply, just ask for the renewal, but that's, we haven't a chance to get back with them, so maybe we can confer, Mary Ann, come back with some recommendations on how to approach them, and you guys can make that formal decision on Tuesday, if that makes sense, Jim? And then get back to...
Sounds like the biggest problem there is, the planning board set the conditions, but the selectmen set their, their conditions on it. They're all together here.
I don't know about that. You mean the rent, the lease?
Lease, and every six months, or every six years, or five years, they have to renew the contract?
I think it was every five.
Every five. Wasn't the planning board, they haven't, they haven't called it five years?
No, 10.
10.
10. 10-year.
The date's there.
Well, it'd be probably nice if both dates coincided, but...
Well, we do, we do every other time.
There's the alternate time. We apparently didn't this time. As to why, I don't know.
Well, it's coming up on 10 years. It's coming up on 10.
Yeah.
All right. So, not now. Susan Mason, anything that we need to act on that?
Um, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, I'll give it to you. I know you're...
It's in your pack that I gave you. He just had some...
As you all know, Susan wants to, Art Center, what she wants is more intense, it's allowed under accessory uses. What she wants, and then again, you know, I know, left together, what she wanted, and she wants to try to go with the citizen petition route, is do it Art Center as pretty much on a by right basis. I feel that, you know, I mean, building factor, and generally to the board, probably would, we wanna see it by special permit, but that's her, her right to do a special petition. I gave her the language. Certainly, when, if she does go that far and get it in, you have a public hearing, you guys could weigh your voice and try to just, just make it by special permit, or not give a recommendation for what she wants, and goes to the town meeting floor, but since petition, that's one of the legal routes, people have the right to put zoning articles together, town meeting warrant. Yeah, and one place I had researched was Rockford, where they allow similar use, and it's by right in the more residential zones near the town center, Rockford, but I touched them on the outskirts. In this case, I only have made this use by right in the R-15 zone. That's what I proposed, I didn't allow it in your rural, rural residential zones. But certainly, I want your input and comment of tonight, not tonight, certainly we can talk about more next week as well.
One of the suggestions to add to the confusion with this thing, is it could be that the board at a hearing for a special permit could consider granting a special permit for a private school, restrict the number of students, and restrict the floors that it could be done on. And from some input from the building inspector, he suggested the number of six students and the first floor only. He said there's some issues, once a school goes above the first floor with requirements that he doesn't think she can afford or comply with, and the number of six would, would keep it at six students. That'd get out of hand. That was, that was a kind of a suggestion from George.
You have to have double stairwells to get outside.
Something like that. He said, he said she doesn't wanna go there.
Too much money.
Because it's gonna, you know, and that would be whether it was by rate, or by special permit, or whatever, she's still, had to comply with all those state building requirements if she tries to go above the first floor.
I have one question. Is Route 122 an accepted and approved way?
So, I don't know. Hope you spent some time on that?
No. No.
I'll get you something to write on that.
Yeah, I got your words.
They want you to get all these permits.
Is this thing, is this thing open for sure, or not?
And walk away.
It's on all the time.
But you can't.
What?
It's on all the time.
Yeah.
Well, how do we know whether it's being used as a feed? You mean it's running at a good time? 3:00 in the morning? I think the person...
It's digital, so it doesn't cost anything. They're gonna remove.
It shuts it down.
Yeah.
So for all we know, it hasn't been running at all tonight.
Well, these things have been tracked.
I guess it is.
They've been tracked.
Well, I know, that one's been moving around a couple of times.
Yeah, those were, too.
I haven't seen them.
No.
I've seen one after. When I was talking, it zoomed right in.
So, I would say, so we got minutes from March the 15th.
Can I follow up on this?
Number?
We were just talking about the, so this could be done under a special permit, adding that.
That was George's suggestion, a special permit under 7B, large B, 4, and that's that, where it starts off private school.
And would that require a special town meeting vote?
No.
Is that under, is that under special permit?
His suggestion is, you know...
Is it under the special permit?
Right. Right.
We've already gone there, too.
I know, but at that point, I think what she was suggesting was a heck of a lot more than six students and only on the first floor.
Yeah.
She wanted, she wanted to do the whole building.
And I did make her aware of what, 'cause I think Mary Ann had actually had more information to me about George's opinion of the six, and she just, she, you know, okay, I'm speaking for her, not, not directly necessarily, but I know she seems to want more than six, she wasn't wanting the limitation in place, that's, as she ordered its first floor, second floor. I didn't reiterate her that during the life and building safety requirements, she does, does that to me on top of any zoning requirements.
George, George said he did make her aware of that, but I'm not sure how well she absorbs what's been told of her.
If you, if we follow what George suggested, how would that be implemented? Would the planning board just vote to add, add something to it?
No, 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 you'd keep the bylaw right the way it is. You would be using that private school to allow a six-student school in that building on the first floor only.
That would be a condition?
Oh, yeah, you'd make it first floor only, number of students. That was George's two suggestions.
But you don't, you don't think that she would wanna go along with that?
Well, I think Eric's getting the same feedback, and George got the same idea, that, you know, she's, she wants, she wants something bigger and more complicated, and George said he tried to point out to her that when she goes above the first floor, the requirements become much more costly than she may even...
Life-saving stuff.
Just one more thing, quickly. The Worcester Craft Center, that's actually coming under a use that's similar to yours in terms of that school, and trade school, I forget exactly what it says, they just add, they clause other to it. It's allowed by by right in some zones, but in others, that location, obviously, you know, Worcester isn't a more urban center, that's one area where it would have particular use is allowed by right, which is interesting, 'cause that's a similar criteria that you guys were having there at the boards.
Fantastic.
Well, no one said ever that this bylaw doesn't need some changes.
Didn't say that?
No, I, I think I've said it about five million times, that this bylaw needs, needs special attention soon, because it's in, it's in dire need of making some changes. It's 1973, I think, when it was originally, 72 or 73, when it was originally adopted. The same, the same year, Camus, that I was originally appointed town council.
Would you care to make some suggestions about writing them?
I've got a million. Are you meaning specific suggestions?
Yeah.
I've got a...
Not tonight, but, you know, could you write something up for us, or...
Well, I think it'd be interesting to dig out the one that James, Jimmy Caruso, there was a, there was a study done, it was a draft to amend the bylaw. It was long enough ago, I can't remember what the specifics were, but it was an extensive change to the bylaw. It was a...
That was, that's the one that didn't pass, right? It was too many changes?
It was a consulting firm hired.
Yeah.
They went through it, they did all their stuff, they said, okay, here's, here's your new bylaw. We had the meeting up at the high school, because we needed the space. The consulting firm's contact person, like, goes to Jimmy Caruso, I don't know how late in the afternoon, but it was damn close to the time the meeting started.
Yeah.
And said, oh, we need to make these changes to what was being already put out to the people at the meeting. So, poor Jimmy, and I really felt sorry for him, he stands up in front, and he starts, okay, you need to make a change to page, whatever, 49, such and such, you know, cross out this, add in, you know, so he was going through, and he, and you could just see the eyes, you know, you know, and I, I think Earl was the one sitting next to me.
Asleep.
Would Earl have been with him?
Yeah.
And I think I said to, I turned around and said, Earl, it's dead. He said, you're right. And, and they, they went to the vote, and, no way near two-thirds vote, what you have said. Oh, God, I don't even remember.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah. And nothing happened after that. I think poor Jimmy was so, maybe ticked, upset, discouraged, whatever one of those implied, maybe all of them, he just, he wasn't gonna go back and get embarrassed again. And so, nothing happened, and who was the next chairman after Jimmy? Was, did that fall on...
I wasn't there then.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the next, the next board didn't pick it up, and it's been, it was probably in one of those cabins.
Could've been Paul Anderson.
It could've been, because he was on the board by the way.
Yeah.
He was on the board.
So, not to be a complete terrorist, but I wanna move the conversation back to the minutes. We have two.
Okay.
To the 15th of March, any amendments, changes? I'm not gonna vote on it, because I was absent.
No, I don't see any. Is this the one, I have to abstain from the...
Oh, did I not put you down here? Right here, Mr. Fumey abstained.
There was a piece of paper...
Oh, okay. Okay. So, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I got some, what's the conditions?
I had a question to talk about the road.
Oh.
We, we want to deal with that.
Come on in, I'm all... I'm going home. It's a single paper.
Yeah.
It's a sort of salary.
Okay, I'm leaving in a few hours. It's a candy?
Well, it's me. Wasn't me. I think, I think Mary Ann probably.
Mary Ann. Can I just ask, where did this thing, it was a one-page thing come from? Oh, okay.
Yeah. I always try to refresh their memory of things that they may need to know before they vote.
Thank you.
All right, on this page two, I would just add where the paragraph starts planner, I would say Eric Smith, comma, shared planner.
Um, where are you?
Page two. Page two.
Yeah.
Second paragraph.
Okay. What, what is it?
You would say Eric Smith, comma, shared planner, comma. And then the next paragraph, where it says Eric Smith planner, update to be discussed at the next meeting. Add, add to be there. It's a line about, the line about the Clean Energy Collective involved. Update to be discussed.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I think a motion we accept.
A second? Those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous in favor? The minutes of the twenty-first meeting of December? A second.
Okay, sorry, huh?
We, those are still outstanding and need to be.
What, which one?
Twenty-first of December.
I sent some suggested corrections to Mary Ann, beginning in March, and hope that she would distribute them when we would be looking at them. Or I could read them off, but I guess I prefer to have them in writing.
I think you brought these in, everyone had gotten a copy.
And I've read them since, subsequently.
Um, you brought them in and everyone has received their copy that night.
Uh, March fourth?
March four.
We're talking December.
What are you talking about?
We're talking December twenty-one, but it was read on the fourth.
This one right here.
I don't have these printed out.
We read on that, the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth of December?
It's when we read it. What was the power button?
Still one cup of coffee and it takes care of it.
It is on. Looks like it'd be moved another way. Well, there's a switch here that says power.
So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be, so I'm trying to be clear.
This is the board and approved by the town administrator.
Me, no.
So you're saying, well, when Mary Ann comes back in, I wanna talk about this for a minute.
Me, no, I wasn't here.
So it was, it was recorded then?
Yes, some of it was. Did someone specifically ask to have it recorded? I asked everybody in email if we could meet down here for this meeting, so it would be, it would be recorded so that people would stay in line and not act out. People responded to me and said, yes, that's a good idea. Well, I didn't know that that had been done, and it didn't, when we were discussing whether it was on, no one mentioned that there'd been a request to have it recorded. I had then sent a request to this Richard DeGon. Yeah. Who must have, because I can't just say do it, he had to get permission. Well, he probably asked Heather whether it was okay. Yeah. So the request, as he said, was a request made by members of the board. Because he used the word members, not member. Well, I'm the one that initiated it. And approved by the town manager, as opposed to the town administrator, so. Well, that's because he has to get paid for it. I can't just say do it. So he must be, just tip a pink again, because it must be on there.
As your, as your meeting ended, oh, okay, I just.
No, we're still going, we're just waiting on paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Mary Ann went to make copies.
Okay.
You're looking, so put it on TV. Can you, is there a thing over there, you can watch what's going on?
Oh, yeah, there's a screen right there.
Is it really? Oh, yeah. It gives each feed, you've got, it shows three small pictures, which is probably the three cameras.
And he controls it from his site in Lancaster.
That's that.
And then he has it put on within twelve hours onto YouTube and Charter.
So YouTube.
You've got, you've got one that's doing, uh. Okay, this one on this side is doing like a broad view, gives the whole, the whole front of the room. The other one is focused right in on Neil.
Oh, good.
So that's Neil, the door two, and then the other camera up there.
Does it show that I haven't shaved?
Pardon?
Does it show that I haven't shaved?
You could probably tell that if you wanted to.
You know, they didn't tell me, I need to get dressed up.
Presentable. I would've won a coat.
You didn't shave either, no.
I shaved on the, no, I didn't.
Well, you know, I'll take the time to tell you guys that I wish I weren't, no, that's a lie.
Remember, it's being recorded.
I know. You know, it's, there's been some heated times in here and, um, probably will be again. And I'm glad my tour of duty's over. Six years.
Thank you very much for this.
Six, been six?
Yeah. And that's it, one and then five. So my bid is over, as they say. Up to the inside guys.
What's the, what's the average life expectancy of a planning board member?
I have no idea.
You may be.
I know, I know what this life expectancy is.
Six months after you leave office.
Oh, you mean how before you get disappeared?
Yeah.
Oh, that's not bad. You've got six months left then.
You've already become a footing on a solar.
I don't know which one it is. I hope I requested. Thanks, Mary Ann. Yes, yes, you are. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good one? Yeah.
Just so, um, you understand, Mary Ann, when I got the grandiose idea that when we were gonna have this contentious meeting, I had sent emails to everybody asking them if they'd like to meet downstairs because of the new camera system, pretty much everybody said yes. I took it upon myself then to contact the Richard DeGon, who I've dealt with many times on Bridge dedications. He's the guy that operates the camera. He then must have contacted Heather because he couldn't do it just on my say-so because there's obviously a stipend involved from the town when he does it. And I'd sent him an email saying he thought I had requested that we do every meeting, and I said, no, it's on an as-needed basis. And I thought that in the interim, we decided we weren't gonna come down here, but then we did. It was recorded. It's been recorded. You said, you said that it may, as a result of my turning it off, have lost some of the recording. So how much has been recorded, I don't know. But if it's all been recorded, you'll probably have another opportunity to see it. Oh, that's a.
That's the intention, I believe, that's the intention, right, to replace this with this other jargon?
January very much.
The other, yes.
Uh, thank you all very much, you did an excellent job. Thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate that.
Have a good night.
I hope I see you again someday.
I'll be here next week.
Good, okay, good. Thank you very much, everyone.
See you later, bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Thank you. This looks like it's the original one I have done, and he's just made some corrections.
Oh.
I'm assuming, right?
So, I'm gonna, I think there's some editorializing going on in here that didn't happen the night of the, that we, we had this. A piece on page two, that it's not true, that was not said there that night, you know, that may be your belief.
Well, I wanna correct, I wanna correct the record.
The, the record is for what went on that night, not for what, what.
The information that, okay, let's take the advertisement, for example. The job advertisement was for a regional planner, it was not for the shared planner position that Eric has taken. He's been on board for CMRPC for a couple of years.
Okay, my point is, Phil, I understand that that, you know, and this may be true, but that's not what was said that, that night.
Well, how do we, how do we correct this, because the information here.
To what was said that night, we can't go re-manufacturing the meeting.
Well, I guess my concern is that this becomes a public document, and the information in here is not necessarily true. And I don't wanna be accused of something I didn't do. Maybe town council can help us with this. How do you correct inaccurate information in a, in minutes?
Is it inaccurate as to what happened at the meeting?
Yes.
It should be accurate as to what happened at the meeting.
That's what I thought.
The statement, the statements in here are not true, some of them. How does that get corrected?
If, if you have a public hearing or a public meeting.
Yes.
And someone stands up and says the sky is blue, and it's not, because it's night, you don't correct the fact that the guy made a false statement when you go to approve the minutes. The fact that a person made a statement that wasn't true is part of that meeting.
What about information that is not correct? Can that be somehow addressed?
At a future meeting.
Well, this is a meeting now.
Not that, that record would stay, at a future meeting, you can say, well, in reviewing those minutes, you find that something was said at that meeting, but you're not changing that minutes, you're not changing the minutes where it was said wrong.
But it would reflect in those next meeting minutes.
Yeah, it would be a.
An addendum to.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, add an addendum.
Yeah, well, it's not an addendum so much as it, at a, at a current, tonight's meeting, then. I think Phil said that something happened at whatever meeting that was, that someone said something that wasn't correct.
Yeah.
So tonight's meeting, by someone that wants to figure out what happened, they'd have to read both.
Right.
Okay, would, would the language be referenced and then as to the comments that's made regarding it?
In tonight's minutes?
Or would it be simpler just to attach this to the minutes for tonight? And say that Mr. Hubbard had some comments on them and include them in the, in the attachment?
I'm not willing to attach, I'm not willing to approve the minutes. You know, when you amend the minutes, we're gonna amend the minutes by what happened, but not with, not with another sheet that is counter, countermanding everything that's in this. We take this, and if you wanna add a thing and come back and rot a sheet later, I think that would be the way to address it in, and take anything out that you, or pick any, or pick any of these things out that are needing to be corrected according to yours, if the board is obliging to that, however it's constituted at that time.
I could do that, I can go through here and pick out the components I find troubling and.
And then see where the board goes at that point.
I guess my.
Am I, at the other meeting that you're reviewing the minutes of, something was said.
Right.
And in reflection upon whatever was said, Phil's saying, whatever was said was incorrect. It wasn't that it wasn't said.
Right.
It's that it was incorrect.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's a topic for tonight's meeting.
Right.
As you review the minutes, your correction of, your, your comment that says such and such said at such and such a meeting in reviewing those minutes, you now realize that comment, though it's in that, that record, is incorrect. But it doesn't change, it doesn't change the original record.
But do we know it's incorrect?
I don't know the reason, I don't know the reason.
Oh, okay, I don't know that either.
All right, let me, let me address the main, main concerns I have. One is that Mr. Anderson confirmed that this was, this is page two. Mr. Anderson confirmed that this position was advertised in September of two thousand and fifteen and presented printout of the job advertisement. Therefore, this had to have been discussed and approved well before that date. So you're accusing me of knowing about this position, and you're saying that you knew about this because there was a job advertisement for it. Well, the job advertisement was for a regional planner in the community development department of CMRPC. They, you know, apply, they ask for applications for regional planners all the time. This advertisement had nothing to do with the position that Eric has taken. I wanna correct that, that, that's not true, that this job advertisement pertained to the shared planner position here with Barry and with McGraw-Hall.
I don't know that.
You wanna address that, Eric?
The advertisement was, it was in September.
It was a September advertisement that I had copied up and it was looking.
That actually led to us hiring, I actually ended up being two planners, because we had the two highly qualified candidates. And that ended up being Paul Delacuilla and Danielle, it's a last name I can't pronounce, Massicioni, I think is what it is. The idea of like the shared plan with McGraw-Hall had very hidden emergence until later in the fall. Don't quote me the exact dates or at the moment, but it was when we were initiating DOTA projects, which are our district local systems projects, in later part of two thousand and fifteen, and also around the time that you guys were doing your community compact with the state, which I think in was later that fall. So, yeah, I don't think there's a great correlation between that job ad and this leave, leaving the town to work here for this shared planner position.
You know, I'd be obliging to some of that languaging that says that, as you say to Eric, that so, that there is no cor, it is believed at this juncture that there is no correlation between those. And I, and I have no way of knowing. I'm not describing what you're saying, I'm just saying I have really no way of knowing. Yeah, I guess, all right, and that's, you know.
Okay.
It's a reasonable.
On the.
Well, well, before we move on to the next one, we're gonna, we're gonna take that, or you want it to read the way you got it written here?
Well, we could just, what I said here was what I just tried to say. The advertisement was for a regional planner in the community development department at CMRPC, not for the shared planner position.
And so, but alluding to the fact that what was said prior was the belief at that point, and now, as we're remending the, these minutes, it is our understanding, so that it's clear what went on, so it's not just two countermanding points?
I guess my point is that I knew that, there is no correlation between the advertisement and, and the position that the shared planner has taken.
I understand that, but that's not what was said that night.
I guess I'm correcting the facts as kind of a.
So you don't, so you don't need, you know.
Oh, the A and R plan, that was, that's.
That's simple, too.
That's all.
So, adios.